I was just in there constantly seeing on a sunny day and the newsman said, "We're gonna have caucuses at Iowa tonight, but there's a blizzard." And I thought, "That's not possible." I guess it was.
Yeah, they were a little impact.
Seven o'clock, call the February 19th meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. If you'd have roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Dranko.
Here.
Angus.
Here.
Mackenzie.
Here.
Rothie.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Thank you. All present and accounted for. Welcome to all of you as visitors and staff this evening. Welcome Sharon, back for your second meeting. We didn't scare you out the first time. You notice we have a change in city clerk this evening. Carla had some shoulder surgery and she's not due back into the office until later this week, so Val has taken over and performing admirably. She's way ahead of me on some things that I've asked her about. Very good. Thank you, Val. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I knew that we approved the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
No? Agenda's approved. Entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for February 5th and the February 3rd budget meetings.
I move that we approve the February 3, 2018 budget meeting minutes and the February 5, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? Approval of the minutes is carried. First item of business is a public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvement Project Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Cost. Open to public hearing. To anyone that would wish to speak or against this project. Hearing none from the people in attendance. Public hearing is closed. Council discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote for Resolution 1820. Take a motion first, please. Sorry.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1821, approving plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $10 million, $194,718 for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvement Project.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion?
Do we know if there were any comments, sir?
Did you receive any comments, Val?
Not.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I just had a general question about, it looked like the bids were a little lower than anticipated.
Quite a bit lower, actually. About a million dollars lower. So it was a very aggressive bid market. We're very pleased with the outcome. So when you factor in the admin services, the everything else that we would have to do normally, we're still within what we were gonna initially bond for, which we were kinda worried about, how would that look? We're still within that threshold now. So it was a very good day at the market for taking those bids and very pleased. The company that we have has done work here before. Very good job. So, very pleased with what came in.
Bids were actually about 1.1 million underneath the engineer's estimates.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other newer information that you would need to update us on that we might not know?
Not that I can think of.
I guess that was the question I had, was the general contractor, if they had done business in town, those type of things.
Yes.
You know, some of the local, more local.
What was the last project they did, Mike? I get it, you microphone whore over there.
They've done a couple of projects in town. There's been some time since they've been here, but they come very highly recommended. They're an excellent contractor, one of the best out there in bridge construction. So as far as past projects, in 2000, they did the railroad bridge over 10th Avenue. More recently, after the '08 flood, they did some repair work on the trail bridge just upstream here.
James, does it seem unusual that the bid would come in a million dollars underestimate? That seems a little unusual to me.
I don't think so. When you look at some of the reduction we've had in the past, per my percentage, you're talking 10, 15 percent. We've had more than that in other bids.
Waterloo just experienced this as well for the Phase 1 University Avenue project. They bid that last week and they saw similar results. Again, I always say that the engineer never wants to compete for the low bid. The engineer's estimate is intended to reflect the average of the bids under a good bid environment. We had, I think, an exceptional environment and in light of what we saw here in Waverly and Waterloo and other projects in the area, it seems to be a very opportune time to be bidding these size projects.
You look at the timeframe, it keeps them busy for two seasons. It's the dollar amount. It's a good limited exposure project where you don't have traffic control. It's just, it's gonna work and that makes it very attractive. And you saw the bids being extremely close with the $50,000 on a nine, $10 million project. It's pretty tight when it comes to percentages. So we're very pleased with how it came out overall. You know, you never know when you do, what's it gonna look like? It could've been a $10 million bid and then we'd have been a little, we'd have a whole different conversation right now. But 8.1 versus 9.2, it's hard to beat that kinda money coming in here. It really helped out from our capacity to make it a lot easier for us to be able to afford this.
Now the questions, comments? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item is Resolution 1822, awarding the contract for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvement Project. Entertain a motion, please.
I would move Resolution 1822, awarding contract for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements Project to Crane and Associates of Grimes, Iowa, for the bid amount of $8,147,317.66.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion? Questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number two, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing to review a request for a change of use from golf course to single-family residential for one additional single-family residential lot in Outlet P of the Planned Development District, Centennial Oaks Golf Club Edition, and to amend the future land use plan from semi-public to residential. Open to public hearing. Comments from the public? For those in the audience, this is in the far southeast corner of south of Centennial Oaks, the intersection of 29th Avenue and 10th, probably 10th Street, something like that.
It's a little farther to the west.
Yeah. Okay. But there was a family that withheld that corner of the golf course for their use and they've decided to sell off a portion of that.
Actually, it's a lot next to those lots.
Okay.
It's a part of the golf course that was unnecessary.
All right. Very good. Again, any comments? Hearing none. Close. Val, any written comments or anything?
No written comments.
Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I will move Resolution 1823, approving a request for a change of use from golf course to single-family residential for one additional single-family residential lot in Outlet P of the Planned Development District, Centennial Oaks Golf Club Edition, and to amend the future land use plan from semi-public to residential.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion?
I just have one concern. Maybe it's not a concern. I just want to have, feel that I've been placated on this, but I've driven out there and looked at this property and this house is gonna be way out there, kind of on its own, with nothing else around it. I just wanna make sure that the city isn't in any way obligated in the future to provide some kind of infrastructure going out to that house, road, anything else that is gonna cost us some money in the future by having this house sitting way out there in the corner away from any other development.
It's got a sewer main in front of it, in the front tract B, so it can hook up right to the sewer. It's getting water like the other lots in Breezy Hill next to it from Central Iowa Water, from underneath the street, and they will be putting in a hydrant also in between those lots. So we should be good.
Okay. You make me feel better. Thank you.
It's on camera, we said it, we should be good.
Yes. It's on the record.
It is on the record.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 2A, Resolution 1824, approving a minor subdivision plot for creation of parcel QQ and tract B in Outlet P of Centennial Oaks subdivision and dedication of tract B to the city of Waverly for right-of-way.
I will move Resolution 1824, approving a minor subdivision plot for creation of parcel QQ and tract B in Outlet P of Centennial Oaks subdivision and dedication of tract B to the city of Waverly for right-of-way.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion? The city of Waverly right-of-way, Bill, is that, where does that fall into this?
The tract B is actually the additional right-of-way adjacent to 29th Avenue.
Okay.
And that's where the sewer main is located within.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number three, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 100, Section 100.12 of the City Code, providing for amendments to the C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District Language. I would entertain any comments from the public? Any written or oral comments, Val?
No.
Thank you. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move the second reading of Ordinance 1030 and ordinance amending Chapter 100, Section 100.12 of the City Code, providing for amendments to the C1, which is the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District Language.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion?
Again, if I understand what you're trying to do here is somewhat in a mixed-use or a transitional space, allow certain commercial things to take place there, but others not to. I guess, just trying to understand how this will be used. I'm kinda looking forward on the agenda with the Casey's development coming in right on the edge of the residential area, the golf course, those type of things. That would seem to be a neighborhood commercial lot versus what we're being asked to look at in the future here with Casey. Generally, the commercial would be along a corridor and there would be, there could be residential next to it, behind it. Generally, what we do is transition with higher density residential before you go to the lower density residential. When you look at 10th Avenue, farther down past the viaduct, underneath the railroad tracks, most of those businesses down there would qualify probably under the C1 and they were directly adjacent to single-family. So I think it's more of a, where you have a direct connection to a single-family neighborhood, that you would use the C1. And it's really the, kind of the developer's choice, 'cause if they're doing both developments, if they're developing the commercial layer and then developing the residential layer, maybe they would choose that kind of, the kind of business that they wanna recruit for that land that they're developing. But generally, you're always gonna get something against the commercial, whether, you know, some kind of residential generally. And it's just really how you transition from higher density to lower, generally.
Well, and isn't it also, though, how you transition to what kind of commercial? I mean, right, I mean, C1 would appear to be a lower level, for lack of a better term, than C2.
The C2, though, would generally be very appropriate along a urban arterials, the collector, the type of streets that we're talking about, that 10th Avenue and Cedar River Parkway and 4th Street are. If you go to a collector-type street, like 3rd Street, which is maybe from Hy-Vee that way towards the south, that's more of a collector street that could have some C1-type businesses and that's more appropriate in a collector street, which is less traffic on those streets. Whereas the, you know, your four-lane 4th Street, your five-lane 4th Street would be where you would expect all your C2 uses to be.
Regardless of what residential is around there? I mean, it seems like they ought to go together.
There's a judge, I mean, it's the judgment of what's there already or what's not there. It's what you're planning from the beginning. Yes, there are exceptions, obviously, to everything. So you have to look at each situation individually and decide what's appropriate in that particular case. And the developer has a lot of control over that, when they're the ones developing both layers. But when they have the choice, then you have to look at those borders between the two and see what's appropriate.
One of those in an ideal situation, if you were starting a city from scratch and you could have a couple arterials and have the buffers built in and the layers, that's kind of how you would do it.
Right.
C2 on the main corridor, and then be one on some of the other streets.
Right. On streets that aren't necessarily residential, but they're collector-type streets. Right? And it's supposed to be a neighborhood commercial, so it's really within those neighborhoods that you can have that kind of a commercial. I know, commercial happens in residential neighborhoods in lots of cities, even with C2 uses. I mean, whether it be convenience stores and other types of things, they blend well into, when they're planned from the beginning, because they can, they're always there until whoever built behind them expects them to be there. It's not always the case that that happens that way.
Regardless of how we map it out, that's why you have planning zoning, allows for those changes to occur and zoning changes to occur. And otherwise, we wouldn't need planning zoning if we're gonna be that strict to what we map it initially at. And so when you have someone coming in, wanna develop, they have a choice of what they want it to be. If it's not where it's already sitting, they go to zoning. Zoning helps decide. It comes to you and that's kind of the whole process to vet this out as we go through it. And that's kind of where you'll be, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but that's what we'll look at as well. You know, we can't forcibly dictate. You can, we can't. As to what will and won't be, that's a request that comes in and it eventually gets to you to determine what is and isn't. So all we can map it the best we can. People have other ideas that come in. There is a process to get that changed.
I think the question was asked earlier, we talked about this, there won't be any effort to retroactively go back and change current zoning. We'll wait until a developer comes forward. That's true.
So that was gonna be my question. Do you have areas of town that you're considering C1 development in?
I can envision certain areas that haven't been developed yet that would probably be very appropriate for C1, because they may be in a, again, a collector area that's not necessarily a residential neighborhood, single-family, but it might abut a single-family neighborhood and you'd use these neighborhood commercial-type businesses in those types of situations. They blend better with, than retail that's basically either 24 hours a day or, you know, late at night or early in the morning type of thing. Most of those C1 businesses are those that are by appointment and they're generally eight or nine to four, five, or six.
And just to clarify, all of this in relationship to the comprehensive land use plan, that only designates only commercial, not, it doesn't go into C1, C2, or anything like that.
That is correct.
So the larger, more long-term plan just identifies areas that could be commercial of some type.
I think a lot of times when we mark something on the future land use plan, if it says mixed-use, that's probably more likely to be towards that C1 use where the commercial would be more towards the C2 and C3 uses.
So I guess it depends on whether you consider the area northwest of Casey's a residential area or not.
It really does. I mean, it's a transition area, obviously. It's near a arterial, two arterials, and it's also near a golf course and existing housing. You bet. Makes it a difficult situation. In a general sense, I agree with the classification and the direction I think you're wanting to go with it. We just now have an application for it as we look at Casey's, trying to understand the difference.
I think it's a good idea to have this opportunity to have that definition of C1 commercial districts in the zoning code, because the C1 definition in the code now is really too broad and doesn't do what it was intended to do. You know, with this definition, we have another tool and be able to put commercial development fairly close to residential areas where there might not be a buffer. It's because this C1 district really isn't gonna have the heavy traffic. It won't have, you know, the early morning, the late at night. It won't have the noise, the lights. It really blends in much more, much better with residential areas. So even though we don't have any C1 commercial districts now, I can certainly see where planning and zoning would be looking at having, at using this in the future. I can think of some areas right now that maybe should have been zoned C1 under this new definition. So I think it's just basically updating. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Waverly for properties described in southwest Waverly, on the southwest corner of 4th Street Southwest and Technology Place, from M1 Light Industrial to C2 Commercial District. That would be an area next to Mark's Auto Repair. Open to public hearing. Any comments, questions? Any written comments?
No.
Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I move the second reading of Ordinance 1031 and ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Waverly for property described in southwest Waverly, on the southwest corner of 4th Street Southwest and Technology Place, from M1 Light Industrial to C2 Commercial District.
I'll second the motion.
Council discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Sharon.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item number five, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 59 of the City Code to replace the current wording with a proposed new chapter. Entertain, open the public hearing? Any written oral comments, Val? Thank you. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Motion from the council, please.
I'll move the second reading of Ordinance 1032 and ordinance amending Chapter 59 of the City Code to replace the current wording of the proposed new chapter.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion?
I'm a little surprised that there weren't any comments. I would've expected a few, which either tells me that either people didn't realize what we were voting on tonight, or they really don't see it as being an issue. So I'm not exactly sure how to proceed on this without any direction from the citizens, but I guess we'll have to use our best judgment.
Oh, we have one more reading that...
That's true. We may still get some. So, people are unnoticed that they should read this ordinance. And just to make sure, maybe we want to explain again what the ordinance is. It's, as I understand it, basically it's increasing the cable franchise fee from 3% to 5%. And half of that money goes to such things as broadcasting this meeting and the other half goes into the operational funds of the city. We're not talking about a significant amount of money. I guess overall, I think we're talking from about, be about $50,000 to be an increase to about $80,000. But it is still an increase and would show up on people's cable bills. And if they have any comments, I would certainly encourage them to let us know, or come to the meeting, or email the city so we can note those before the final reading.
And that would be true regardless of which cable service
Yes.
people are using.
Just keep, I was gonna say, just keep in mind that we need to pass a chapter to do this, to either charge 3% or 5%. So if you change your mind about the number, we still need to pass the chapter and then put the number that you wanna have in the final reading.
Bill, it's not in the summary, but what was it that we voted on last year, on the same topic?
Yeah.
Because I believe we voted to end it.
To have no, to have no increase.
Not to. Was it no increase?
I recall.
No increase or to remove it?
I thought it was voting not to have it.
It was to allow it to sunset. It was the same resolution. It was the same resolution, I believe. But it didn't pass, which is basically saying we wanted the franchise fees to unset itself after the time period.
But that didn't happen then, right?
Right.
Part of it has to do with the state giving the providers an option to opt out of that franchise fee
Right.
at some point in time, which I think MediaCom did.
Yes.
And now we're asking to, we have the option to reinstate it.
Right.
And both providers, wherever utilities and MediaCom, would be subject to the same fee.
Could we get that in the summary for next time, what the vote was last year? Because we did vote on that. That's not in the summary statement of timeline or anything.
No, it isn't. And I believe it was exactly the same as what you're voting on now.
We'll look into it.
And I can, we can put that back in.
The vote was split and, but just for those that are new on council to know that this was voted on last year and there was a decision by the council last year on an action, so.
The Cable Commission voted to ask us to bring this back, so that's why we brought it back to you.
So they're in favor of it?
Yes.
And why did it get voted down last time?
Concern about raising the fee, I believe.
Or having any fee whatsoever.
Right. So was it last time, was it the raising the fee or just having the fee in the first place?
It was a combination of both, I think. They were both. There was, you know, my concern always then that we're charging this fee for the lines that are in the ground to just those that are using the cable. So, you know, if I'm using cable or something and my neighbor is not and the line breaks by and my neighbor is not, and the line breaks by my neighbor's house, I'm paying to fix it, and, you know, so you're talking about those access fees, it's just, from an equity standpoint, these, these lines aren't used just for cable television, you know?
Well, the cable one, the cable is for the MediaCom cable, but the fiber is being used for multi-purposes.
Right, and, but only those that are using cable are paying for the fiber.
Right.
And so, you know, people that are using the fiber for non-cable purposes aren't paying. And that was my objection.
I believe that's true because they only allow you to do it for cable TV.
Yeah, right, and that's, that's, that was my objection to it, is that, you know, there's, there's something there that's being paid for by some people, but not everybody.
How much money actually is it, that's on our cable bill?
We're talking $50,000 to $80,000.
I mean, per person's cable bill.
I think I looked the other day, it was a do, our $2, $2.30.
But it's the same kind of a...
Principle.
I pay for, I pay for the sewer line, you don't have to pay for the sewer line, but we both get to use it.
I pay for certain streets here that I never drive on.
Yes, exactly.
Right? So...
But there aren't people that don't pay for those streets, everybody pays for it.
People from out of town.
Yeah.
That drive on the streets, don't live in Waverly. I mean, you know, you could carry that argument forever and ever, so.
Yeah.
I think, you know, looking forward, I, yeah, I just wonder, you know, with the, I think, the increasing decline of cable, cable TV usage, you know, do you think we have to be a little bit careful about the, you know, that, that isn't a revenue source that becomes, yeah.
Well, and that's the argument from raising it from three to five, is because fewer people are using it, so raise the price on people that are using it, so you keep the same high...
But, you know, the alternative would be to basically, we didn't have that money, it would basically mean that that money's gonna be replaced by tax, real estate taxes, some other source of revenue.
Yeah.
And as I recall, the last time too, when we discussed this and voted on it, I think, I think we learned, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, that it's relatively common practice in cities to do this and to have a portion of it go to the general fund. I mean, not that that has to matter, but it's still, I think, good to know that we're not an outlier in that.
No, we're far from it. Most cities that have it are at the 5%, and quite a few cities have it, and other utility surcharges as well, and we don't do as much as others do by any means when it comes to that, whether it be stormwater utilities or other fees, or... So we are not out of the norm, we're certainly not the only one, but I don't like to compare necessarily, because someone else is doing it, but, but if that's a concern, yeah, we are not by any means...
One of a handful of areas where we're allowed to generate some revenue.
Right.
Sure. They don't give us a lot of opportunities.
They do not, once we find one, they close it. Always looking, always looking.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Roll call vote please, Val?
Lawson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kenzie?
No.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Time has come for public comments on any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that has a burning desire to speak to the council and the public about something that's on their mind? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Following items...
I'd like to separate out the QuickStar 707 liquor license.
Okay. There's a pay request from McClure Engineering for Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018, another pay request from McClure Engineering for the same runway extension 2018, one in the amount of $24,310, the other one $7,131. Pay request from McClure Engineering for the airport bulk hanger improvements for Pay request from McClure Engineering for the airport bulk hanger improvements for 2017, $2,405. Class C liquor license for Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, case dispersments for January of 2018, and item number six, which is the liquor license for QuickStar, we'll deal with after the rest of these. Your motion to approve the consent, consent calendar.
I'll move the remaining consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made in second, counsel, questions, discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carried on all the items with number six, Brian?
I hate to be that guy, but if I'm looking over ownership, I do not believe that the owner lives in the city of please select Wisconsin. I feel like if they have to fill out the forms, they should do it right, and this isn't due until March 31st, they can fix it and resubmit it.
It's a small village.
A small, yeah.
You've never been there, Brian?
I have never been to please select Wisconsin, no.
Right next to your choice.
That's right.
I'll have to commend you on your eagle eye there, Brian.
That's what I was looking at.
We'll fix that too.
We'll fix that too.
What's our, what's our procedure on this one, I guess, Val?
Bring it back in the...
Okay, all right. So, so item number six is to be brought back at a later date.
Need a red pen to circle that. Send it back, I know.
Sometimes the forms have it, like where it defaults back to the year 1900 for the data and things, so, yeah. We've got some of these forms that come through.
It's the state, I, you know, I don't want to tell you. We'll fix it.
Either way, we'll find please select Wisconsin.
My word is on that.
Never know, it could be.
You wait.
Actually, probably closer to the cross or...
Probably.
Well, show up on MapQuest or Google.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Regular business, first item, first reading of ordinance 1033, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property on the northwest corner of Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Avenue Southwest from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 Commercial District with accompanying statement of commitments from the applicant for amending the Waverly future land use map and from residential and commercial to commercial and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion, please.
I would move the first reading of ordinance 1033, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property on the northwest corner of Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Avenue Southwest from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 Commercial District with accompanying statement of commitment from the applicant for amending the Waverly future land use map from residential and commercial to commercial and setting March 5th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Before we get into counsel discussion, this has to do with the Casey's project, and there are some representatives here. Do you have some things that you'd like to present to the council and our viewers?
It would be my pleasure, my name is Wally Pelz with Pelz Engineering Company, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50316. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We're requesting for that hearing to be set. I was hoping that you had had a chance to go through, just give you a brief summary, we were here before and understood the opposition, and there wasn't necessarily a vehicle to meet with the neighbors or something that was required by ordinance. We subsequently removed our request, held a community meeting in the hall across, in the facility across the hallway, and had some discussions, so I'm hoping you've had a chance to read through the statement of commitments that we put together that was in your packet. A lot of that information came from there, where we're, one of the biggest ones is that we're reserving 125 feet of green space on the west side of our lot that can never be developed, maintaining their view behind their homes. I have some brief things I can run you through in the site plan that we did to address most of their concerns, I would be happy to show them to you, let me, do I need to move back over? So as, as you can see, our site is in the northwest corner of Fourth and 10th, hopefully you're all familiar with that location. This is a picture of what the site is today, showing the existing home, the residential turnaround, and then this drive that comes back out. This is what we have proposed for a layout, and I hope you can see that. After meeting with the neighbors, one request was to see how far we could push the car wash to the south. We were able to push it 50 feet to the south, and then the issue of noise was brought to our attention, concerns about running the car wash. Some of the things that we discussed, we've, we've agreed to limit that car wash operation from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, so they're not hearing it during sleep hours. We also have agreed to, and we did some sound testing at a facility with blowers like this, when the doors are shut, the neighbors should, it should blend in with the background sound. And I'll get to some pictures so you can kinda see what we're talking about, but that was, that's, I believe, the biggest point of contention at this point.
Before you, before you leave that page, may, may I ask you something about it?
Absolutely.
Where, on the site plan, where you have your structure, if, if that were superimposed over the home, can you tell me about where that would be? I mean, just walking, you know, walking back there, I know where the home is, so I'm just trying to get a sense of how close you are to the first condominium.
The home would sit, the existing home sits about here.
Okay.
I think that if you look on this map, you can just see the little corner poking out at the top of where the existing condo, no, so like way up on the far edge.
Yeah.
Right.
The existing house, so you can see...
No, I'm, I'm referring to the condominium, you can just see its corner at the top.
Yeah, I can see that, but, but I'm just trying to get a feel for it, so, and the house would be further north, is what you're saying, of your building?
The, the house sits roughly about 37 feet further north than what we're proposing our closest building to be.
Okay. Thank you. And I have another question about that drawing, what, go back to the one you wrote before. North of the building, what are those long ovals?
Those are the underground storage tanks.
For fuel?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a question, you referenced the noise decibel limit with the doors shut?
Correct.
I guess I've never been at a car wash with blowers that operate with the doors shut, it's usually as you're exiting the facility and...
With this one, the dryers are placed on, it's got a mechanical, moving arm or arch that goes above your vehicle, and it will actually pull and blow the water off, you don't move forward, you don't drive out, it does it for you, it slowly moves forward and dries the car off.
You can do that operation with the doors closed?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's how it'll be all the time?
That is correct.
So if I may ask, now the diagram that I see, the entry-exit at the top right of this picture is going on to Fourth Street, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right turn in, left turn out, or just right turn in?
At, at this point, the DOT and some of the studies that they've asked us to do, we've begun that process, that was also a, a concern of the neighbors of increased traffic. One of the things I hope the neighbors were happy to hear about, we're not a, you know, hey, let's load up the car and go shopping at Casey's, it's usually a, about 66, 67% what's called pass-by traffic, is you're going by, and that's the traffic that we pick up. There is some additional traffic for us, roughly 33% increase of just what our store generates for pizza, that type of a specific destination.
I'm looking at the fuel tanks there, what, what time do deliveries usually occur for the fuel being delivered?
It'll be during operating hours.
During hours, okay.
Yep.
And are there storm sewers, or what happens to the water that accumulates in the parking lot and the fuel that people spill?
Sure. I can actually show you if I can go to the next page. We are actually proposing, I don't know that you can see it necessarily, this is a, this is our grading plan, so which you'll see from the renderings, we're gonna sit up above, creating a quiet space below us, kind of, our facility will be up, the residential condos will be below us, and in that space, we've buried what's known as storm tech chambers, so we do exfiltration and infiltration of the water, recharging into the ground, and then we have a, a small outlet pipe that discharges at peak at a two-year release rate for the stormwater quality and a five-year for 100-year storm. So the stormwater gets all collected, we will not have a detention basin per se, it'll all be an underground detention chamber, so it will not be visible.
And so do you treat that water, or what happens, is it just infiltration that keeps the pollution?
There is an infiltration process, there's what's known as, there is a first chamber that goes in that we're charged with catching the first flush, and in that one, it's lined with engineering fabric and other filter membranes that catch all the fine particulates, you know, when the first little rain we get and the roads get slick, it's because of all that dust, well, that washes in, that gets caught in that first chamber, and then it perks through the filter material and then goes into a rock bed, absorbs as much as we can into the soil, and then any remaining that we have in excess of an extreme storm starts to trickle out a pipe that's at a controlled release rate that's not higher than a five-year storm prior to development, if that, that's very technical terms. It's, I would explain it to you, that you will not get more runoff from this location than prior to development, you'll actually have less.
Of water runoff?
Of water runoff.
What about the fuel? That's my concern.
We actually have, are you asking like if we had a spill?
Well, you know, if you forget to turn off the pump and you spill gasoline all over the car and whatever else, where does that?
That'll actually go into this system, and there are hydrocarbon filters that we have.
Okay.
All of our stuff is resistant to melting, because the, the underground chambers are made of a high-density polyethylene, it's like a plastic chamber, so...
Now, a question about, is this diagram the one, or do you have another that would show us how you would, how it's proposed to screen the facility from the residential neighborhood?
Yep, I, I was still, I'm still moving forward.
I was just looking at this one, so this is gonna be, because going to the west, that's quite a drop-off then down into the...
That's correct.
And there's gonna be a hill on the backside?
That's correct.
Okay, having grown up in Waterloo, Cedar Falls, I remember Holiday Station Store there on University Avenue had a huge hill that was big for sledding and a ramp, is this gonna end up a situation where people are gonna be able to go, hey, it's winter time, we've got a new sledding hill in town?
They might be able to.
Okay. I was gonna say, because the Holiday Station ended up having to put up a fence because it got too dangerous for people that come through here.
Yep, we'll have, we'll have a fence along here, also you'll see in the rendering some of the landscaping that we're proposing. Along the entire perimeter to the north, we're proposing a cedar fence, a double-slatted offset slats so the sound doesn't travel through, six foot tall, we've also created a three-foot berm behind our curb to raise it up. Six foot tall, we've also created a three-foot berm behind our curb to raise it up, and, and you'll see that in the renderings as well. And then this is our landscaping plan, so all the circles and the trees are densified. We've looked at doing Norway spruce, American arbor vida, and then emerald green arbor vida. We were also told about the deer issue, that the arbor vida will get trimmed at a nice level. They have a tendency to like to eat those.
Wally, what's your elevation at the front? Because there's a large berm, I guess it is, along the road there, at least in the northern part of the property. Is that going to be flush with the street as it is now, or are you going to build that up or put landscaping or?
Along the front area?
Yeah.
That will, will come up with, at a gentle slope at about 4% up from the road, and then it'll be our curb, then our canopy, and our building. And then our car wash sits a little bit lower, and then it goes to the back, and then it drops off. I could count the lines.
Are you as far east as you can get, as close to the road as you can get, or is there more room to move everything in that direction?
Our intention at, at this point was not to crowd Fourth or Tenth due to potential future expansions, right-of, right-of-way requests for future public improvements. Just from our conversations with the DOT, initially, we've submitted a draft form of a traffic study. They've submitted comments back. We're working on addressing those comments to get a final report that would be available for everyone to review. At this point, they, they like our spacing on these. They've asked us to potentially add or widen this, the south, I don't know if you can see my finger. They've asked us to participate in widening along the south of Tenth to get more stacking. Additionally, they've asked, and look, and we're looking at adding paving to create a turn lane in to get traffic out of the way on Fourth going to the north. Those are all things that the DOT is asking us to do. It's a, it's a combination of the city has to recommend it, and then the DOT has to approve it as well. Ultimately, you both have say.
So are you anticipating people exiting and entering from both directions for both driveways?
Yes, that's correct.
Based on what they said.
And, and it really, each site's so unique because the, the locals figure it out really quickly, what's the easiest way to get in and get out. You become accustomed to, okay, well, if I pull in here, it's easier to get out this way. Or maybe in the morning, it's that way, in the evening, it's something different, just depending on what the traffic patterns are. And people will become familiar with it. We anticipate, and as did the DOT, is that as, during some of the peak hours, when Fourth gets backed up, we would expect most people to exit on Tenth to get up here and then turn to the north to go on Fourth, if that's the way they were trying to go. Because we heard from residents down here trying to get in on Eighth Street, that they will sometimes come up, turn around the church parking lot, and then go back and still see the person that was behind them sitting there turning left to go north on Fourth, so.
And are you going to put landscaping in front on the corner there, or just?
We will do, I mean, if, if that's what was, at this point, our site plan is not complete. This is just a, we're in the rezoning process, and I feel like we're way ahead, I mean, my cart's way ahead of my horses at this point, because you're asking me detailed questions on a site plan that we're doing the best to show what we're committing to, to the neighbors. So I'm happy to come back and say, when this thing's polished, I can answer it. More than likely, we'll have more landscaping up front, but at this point, we're trying to make sure that we got all the landscaping shown for the discussions that we had had with the neighbors.
And I do appreciate, I think you've put in a lot of effort to this. I'm impressed that you've listened to the neighbors, and so please don't interpret at least my questions as...
No, I was like, well...
But, but we're being asked to, we're being asked to make a decision when there's already a planned project instead of just a general, we're being asked a general question, but there's a specific project happening.
Right, and, and...
And so it's, it is important.
And through the, through the process, I mean, if, if that's a requirement, or if you would like to see more landscaping up front, we're not, landscaping doesn't bother us. The only time it's a little bothersome if they ask us to put it in front of our, you know, signs that where people are trying to see the price of gas or something. We're happy to beautify up front. That is not a big issue for us. So I would expect we'll have some more landscaping up front. This is just, these are the things that we're trying to render and show, because you'll see, this is actually 3D rendered, which I'll get to.
Since you mentioned signs, Wally, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Sign. Are you going to have a towering Casey's sign or a more low to the ground with no bushes in front of it sign? Or do you know? I don't know what you do in other towns.
I believe this is proposed to be a taller sign that stands up, that identifies its people visibility so they can see it.
Would it be lit?
Typically, the gas prices are lit.
So would there, I, I'm asking, is it going to be shining to the north?
No.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be lit up, but if you're asking if it shines as in to...
Well, I mean, just, you know, if, if I have a sign that's lit up, you know, visibility, I mean, I suppose, I know you're talking about kind of putting these trees to the north. Are they going to be sufficient to block the sign from those houses, or how high is that sign going to be?
Actually, the sign, if you look, the sign is all the way down here in this corner.
Okay.
And with a 20-foot grade change between here and here, there's no way that's, it's just geometry or trig at that point, that we shouldn't be able to see it. And then, I can show you my pretty pictures. So this is a, a 3D rendering. We came out, took some elevations around the condos. These are the condos stripped, and these are their living levels, which is the upstairs level, just roofs, everything is removed. We showed the separation walls, so you would actually have a line of sight. And then we placed, our software allows us to place a person in each one of those locations. So this gives you kind of a, if we had a drone, it would be hovering up above these buildings. That's what it would see for the back. And then we start, we start at the furthest unit to the east, the one that's closest on the corner. This is their view looking out towards Fourth. And this is their view looking to the south towards Tenth. Also, I did want to mention that the spruces and the arbor vida are sized as if what size they're going to be planted. The spruce will get very big. The arbor vida will grow as well, and over, the spruce are fast-growing, it's going to grow two feet per year. The arbor vida are about, once they get their root system, up to 12, maybe 16 inches, just depending on how the fertilizer goes and how the deer chew them. But as we mentioned in our agreement, you know, we're willing to maintain all those things and be accountable to the neighbors. So that's the first unit. Second unit, you can see that the roof line, because the car wash is, I believe, 18 feet tall, you begin to see the roof line of the car wash. When you're looking left, this is their neighbors. Why, you can't see that. You can see, there's that blue wall that's up, that's that separation unit, so they can't see further down towards Fourth. And this is their view looking south, and then you can kind of see that, if you can see the, the big slope, it's about a 20-foot hill at a four-to-one slope, so it's not too steep. This is the next unit over, so the third unit from the east. Again, they can still see a little bit of the roof structure.
Now, is this the ground floor or the upstairs view?
This is the upstairs floor. This is modeled for the upstairs floor. And then this is, this is their view, again, looking towards Tenth. You can see Tenth Avenue a little bit modeled in there. And then this is the fourth and final unit. And as you can tell, as my distance gets a little bit further, my fence had to get, I mean, ideally, I was going to get everything screened completely, but I ended up with a 10-foot fence. My opinion is that looks like a prison wall, so I prefer not to do those. So we stayed with a six-foot fence and created a berm to the, you know, as, as high as we could go.
Does the fence have any potential to reduce the, the traffic sounds, sounds that they're already hearing?
Oh, oh, yes, absolutely. That's the purpose of the sound, that's the purpose of the double map, because what we do is it's a two-by-six fence. I have a cedar board here, cedar board here. I got to leave about an eighth to a quarter of inch gap for shrink swell, but then on the other side, I've got a board that's opposite that gap, so you can't get the sound wave to go through it. So it will block, and we did...
You can hear traffic there now. So you think, you think that, that sound will be reduced?
That will help tremendously. It's also intended to block the sound of the car wash, because even with the door closed, we're still at, at 250 feet, we went to one of our existing facilities and took some reports. At 250 feet, direct line of sight, you can see it, you can hear it, and we were at the, it's in Urbandale, in, in one of the suburbs of Des Moines, on the north side there. And we went across the street to the condo unit, which was 250 feet away, just to kind of get a simulation. As soon as I stepped behind their garage unit, which creates that barrier like that fence will, it dropped to background noises on the sound decibel level. I was out there with our sounding expert. So ideally, we're trying to be the least impactful that we can. And then hopefully, this demonstrates it for you. And then this is the last one looking south, out towards the green, which is reserved for non-development, you know, again, referencing this is where that 125-foot section is that will never get developed.
Can you hold the microphone when you speak?
Oh. Oh, yep. Is this better? So this, basically, this is indicating that 125-foot section. It's that green space, because we understood that was very important to them, because they have, they have a beautiful view, even though, you know, we'll mow it. They asked if we'd mow it, and I said, well, we will certainly do so. It'll be part of our maintenance agreement with what we do typically. We don't want anything looking ugly next to us either, so.
I guess I'd like to add a little bit of comments about your willingness to take a step back and maybe approach this project a little differently than what the timeline is on a lot of them. I think it's important, given where you're putting it, some of the questions the residents around there had. And I certainly appreciate your efforts there. I guess the one question I have is there must be a lot of money in car washes, as diligently as you've worked at trying to keep it on the lot. If, if the decision was made that the car wash just didn't fit in that area, would that be a showstopper for the project?
You know, I, I'd have to ask that question. It's, what it does is it augments the experience for our customers. We've looked at the area, looked at the competing car washes. We don't think there's one that's as high-tech as ours is, that does as good of a job as ours would. I think that's why we push for it. We necessarily don't make money on them. It's kind of, it's kind of a wash, but it pulls the traffic. Sorry. That's not a, sorry. What, what, who's an accountant, who can tell me the proper term?
Break-even.
It's, it's a break-even, and it's just another service that attracts traffic that's passing by. And, and that's the purpose of it. And we prefer, that's our new model, because we get lots of good comments on it, especially, I think with the efforts that, that we've gone to, to noise buffer the neighbors in this location with the fence, the berming, the raising of our site, we're shy of dirt. I mean, we'll be hauling dirt in to make this plateau, you know, creating this. I heard one of the neighbors comment saying they like their little valley. It's, it's pretty docile down there. And I know exactly what they're talking about. When you go hunting and you get away and down into the valley, it gets pretty quiet. So i- if we can mimic that with the fence and the landscaping, which I believe we have, we would really like to keep that car wash. And that, that's what I can tell you.
This may be a question for Bill or James, but the commitments made, the first time the car wash is running at 10:30 at night, what's the process?
Well, what, what we did is, the, the commitments have become basically a definition of what is a nuisance for their property. So somebody else might do something like that, now, you know, not maintain their fence or not, or run their car wash, you know, 10 minutes later. And, but we can enforce it through that nuisance enforcement, which means we can do the municipal infractions, and that'll be pretty effective.
Let, let me jump in here just a second, though, because I, I have some personal experience with commitment agreements from where we live, and commitment agreements are extremely difficult to enforce. The city can enforce them definitely, but the city would have to make a, a major commitment to be able to do that. And if there were continual enforcement issues, I question whether the city would really want to put that kind of resource into, to making, enforcing those commitments. The only other option would be for the residents themselves to enforce the commitments through a nuisance action, which I can tell you is lengthy and, and expensive, which is also problematic. So I appreciate all the work, I truly do appreciate all the work that you've done on this, and I think it, it looks, you know, very good. But, you know, we have to remember that what we're voting on here is not whether we want this particular development to be in this area, but whether this property is going to be rezoned from residential to C2 commercial. And that's a little bit different question, because anybody can come in here, even if, Casey's has the best intentions of the world, to keep the fence painted and the grass mowed and, and the trees growing. I can tell you that when the first half dozen trees die and it begins to be more expensive proposition to replace all those trees, the commitment isn't necessarily there to the same extent it was, you know, before the land was rezoned. So once the land is rezoned, it's, it's rezoned. I mean, it's, it's done. There's nothing we can do to go back and do it. So we really need to think very carefully about whether we really want this property to be zoned commercial as opposed to the question of whether we want this, whether this is going to impact the people that live in the, in the neighborhood. And I, I, I did some research on this. I have four points. I'm not going to go through them tonight, but I, they're four categories, four questions that I need to be convinced that they answered in the affirmative before I, I would vote to, to rezon this. And I have some real problems with it. I'm going to vote to go ahead with the hearing, just because I think, I want to hear what other people have to say. But I'm, I'm still very skeptical about going forward with rezoning this as a C2 property. I could see rezoning part of it, especially the part that's currently in the comprehensive plan, that's listed as future commercial development, and rezoning that as C1, which would not have the kind of traffic impact and light and noise and, and those kinds of issues, drainage that we might have with C2 property. But like I said, I'm going to, I, I'm going to go ahead and, and, and vote to, to go to the next step on this and have the public hearing, because I want to hear what people have to say. I never want to cut off discussion on this. But I, I do have some real issues with having this rezoned as a C2 commercial area.
Yeah, I think you raised the point. It's a difficult decision, and I think, I agree with you that C1 seems more appropriate in some ways, although would we get a C1 developer who's as cooperative, who makes as, as much of an effort as this one has? I don't know, right? So it's complicated.
Kind of, kind of the, the bird in the hand as opposed to the...
The unknown bird.
Two birds in the bush kind of issue. But, yeah, and, and it's possible that there might not ever be anyone who wants to develop that as commercial property. But, you know, that's, that's the decision that we have to make and balance those competing interests.
Well, keep, keep in mind that this evening, and, and I appreciate Casey's input very much, keep in mind that we're voting on to set a public hearing. But I did have a request, and Mr. Janson, do you have any comment that you'd like to make?
Jim Janson, I'm, I'm here with my wife Carla tonight, and I really...
And I realize this is not the public hearing. I'm just going to pose a couple of questions, almost rhetorically, not for answers tonight. But hopefully, we'll make our discussion at the public hearing a little bit more complete. Of the neighbors described, we're kind of the outliers. We're not in the condos. We're in the property directly north of here. And I haven't seen renderings of what our view would look like. Hopefully, we can get together on that. So matters like lighting, noise, really haven't been addressed from winds, for example, from south to north. It's real clear to me that I can stand in my front yard and hear driveways, or people driving in Grace Baptist Church, because of the wind factor. That's something to kind of keep in mind. My probably biggest concern is our individual safety, as our family and our neighbor's family, who share a same driveway, are in really close proximity to the driveway being proposed off of Forest Street. So I would, I am looking for clarity, and I hope you, as a council, look for clarity in exactly what will that east driveway look like? Will it be, will it permit left-turning drivers that are going north, which would really compete for my space as I turn right going south? I can see that as being a real danger point, both from drivers heading down the hill at sometimes pretty rapid speeds with a pile of cars behind them. And now are they going to make a quick decision and turn left and right into my lane of traffic? I realize people work out driving patterns. I'm probably as concerned about the stranger or the newcomer in town who hasn't worked that out yet. And I think no matter what kind of signage can be there, it still is that person who gets going past the stoplight, going north, is going down the hill, realizes they want to pull into Casey's, makes a quick left-hand turn, gets slammed into from behind, or meets traffic coming north from south, of which it might be me. And so I just ask that we problem-solve together. I do appreciate Casey's work up to this point. But there is an element that hasn't been discussed, and that's the two houses directly north of the land that we're talking about. Again, I'm expecting no answers tonight, just raising some questions for further discussion, so that when we come around to May 5th, we can have a more specific discussion on these matters. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Maybe something that you and Casey's people can visit with in different times a little bit.
Be glad to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? I think we have a motion and second on the floor.
Just a real quick comment. I just want to echo what Rod had to say about this. I've got lots of questions about the appropriateness of doing it. But I do think we should hear what the citizens have to say. So if I vote for, if I vote for this, it should not be taken as an indication. I've made my mind up. I just want to hear what people want to say.
Yeah, we have, we have two, two more meetings on this. We'll have second reading and public hearing, and then a third reading after that, so.
Yeah, I concur with Mike was said. When this came before us, before I was kind of in the same mode. Mike had said it, that, you know, we'll move it to the public hearing to hear, get people a chance to really voice their opinions on it.
One thing I would like to ask maybe of the renderings is can we get a rendering of what it might look like at night with the lights? Because a number, a number of those views that you showed from the condos showed the downward-facing lights. But how much additional spillage of that light is going to be there, since they are so far below? Grade-wise, you know, how much of, how much can you shelter that, you know?
We, again, we can do that. It's just, at this point, I'm just going to, candidly, we've done more 3D renderings, and they're not cheap. And we're at rezoning. I'm not saying, I'm not saying I won't do it. I will ask. But that budget has been more than tripled already of where we usually are at this stage. And we have no commitment that we can build. So I'm just a little concerned. I'm trying to represent my client, you know. I'm happy for the work, if they say yes, right? But it's, I'm, I cautiously say, "Yes, I think I can get that." And I'll try and get it in that 3D view. I know I already have one from the top view of what it looks like, showing the light patterns and the spillage of, if that's what you want to call spillage of the light, so. Or it's a broadcast area. Lighting's not my expertise, so.
Are there, are there Casey's in the area that have this sort of build or lights that we could look at?
I can get a list of them. That would be close.
There's a, there's a new one on Green Hill in Cedar Falls.
Yep, that's correct.
So that would be typical of?
That would be typical of one. I don't believe the Green Hill one has fences. The fencing does actually play a huge role in blocking that specifically, because we'll be eight feet above the paved surface, which then does a really good job of blocking any light that's reflecting off of our pavement.
One other, one other comment. And Bill, you could answer that. Does the site plan come to the council for review? Is that strictly plan and zoning?
Actually, it doesn't. It comes between, for the staff and DOT.
Okay, okay, so.
For driveways.
But it would be reviewed and, you know.
We've been reviewing it all along, in fact.
Okay, very good.
I guess that's why, just building that, that's why I'm glad we're taking the time to do it now, because those traditionally don't come back to the council. And I think because of the impact this could have on that corner, it deserves to be reviewed by the council. I appreciate that.
Happy to do so.
Very good. Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I don't know if this is, Bill, if you're going to be able to find the answer to this. I'm of the impression the house there has been for sale for a little bit. Do we know how long that house has been for sale?
Which house?
The residential house on this property that's being removed?
It hasn't been for sale. The whole property has been for sale.
The whole property's been for sale? Has, was the house for sale?
I don't believe the house was for sale individually. It's, the house next to it was for sale. I think the middle one.
Was or is?
Was, but it's, it's been sold.
But the house on this property wasn't for sale? They weren't trying to sell it?
It was the one in the middle. The next one over. Between Mr. Jansen's house.
Okay, but not, not on this property? So the house on this property was not for sale?
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item, Resolution 1825, approving contract change order number one, bonds and certificate of insurance from Benton Sand and Gravel for the winter tree-cutting project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. And this is tree-cutting on the Cedar River Parkway East. Entertain a motion?
I will move Resolution 1825, approving contract change order number one, bonds and certificate of insurance from Benton's Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the winter tree-cutting project for Cedar River Parkway East improvements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Mike, do you have any input that you'd like to make on this one?
Nope. They're anxious to get started. Survey work will be taken care of later this week. And I think they will be on-site next Monday.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Motion carried, Resolution 1826, approving the professional services supplemental agreement, number one, with Stanley Consultants for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements for construction design services. Entertain a motion, please.
I'll move Resolution 1826, approving a professional services supplemental agreement, number one, with Stanley Consultants of Des Moines, Iowa, for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements for construction design services for the not-to-exceed amount of $695,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Is this normally a percentage of the project, or?
No, no. We do not do percent contracts. We do estimated time and materials contracts. So we're only billed for when they're on-site performing the work.
Further questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Val.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number four, Resolution 1827, awarding contract for the Waverly Municipal Airport Bulk Hangar Insulation Improvements. Project number one, option number two, project.
I'll move Resolution 1827, awarding contract for the Waverly Municipal Airport Bulk Hangar Insulation Improvements. Project number one, option two, project to modern builders of Janesville, Iowa, for the bid amount of $54,970.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Questions?
So we're using option two, which is to let the existing insulation remain and add insulation over it, as opposed to removing all the insulation and putting all-new insulation. Does that affect the lifespan of this? I mean, is there a trade-off, or, you know, because we have old insulation in there, it might not last as long?
I don't believe so. And it will increase the R-value as well. So it should make it more energy-efficient.
So keeping that old insulation there. So either case, they're putting the same new insulation over it. It's just one is going to have leftover insulation behind. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're going to leave, yeah, they're going to leave the existing.
Well, as opposed to if they remove it, they're going to put in new additional to make up for the stuff that they're removing?
I don't believe so. I believe they have to maintain the same R-value. It cannot be less than the current R-value.
So the additional cost is because they would be removing insulation, and that's the only addition, I mean, so in some sense, we may be better off with that extra layer of insulation, the old insulation that's being left behind.
Correct. That will increase the R-value and the energy efficiency.
This process would be the same as what was done in the, another area of the hangar out there. Is that correct, pretty much?
It'll be similar, but some of this stuff is proprietary. And so it's not going to be exactly the same. It'll be similar.
Okay, all right.
And the issue really isn't the insulation itself. It's more the covering that's on it that's deteriorated.
That's correct. The covering or the facing of the old insulation is, is basically disintegrating and flaking. And it's creating a dusting of white powder that is released into the air.
So this will encapsulate that, so.
So Mike, what's the lifespan of something like this, once we put that on there?
Hopefully, 20 years. Yeah, about 22 years on the existing system. So hopefully, this will, will be in that 20, 25-year range.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item number five, Resolution 1828, fixing an amount to be assessed against private property for the Bremer Avenue Water Main and Service Line Improvement Project, 2017 stage, and directing the engineer to file an assessment schedule with the city. Entertain a motion?
I move Resolution 18-28, fixing an amount to be assessed against private property for the Bremer Avenue Water Main and Service Line Improvement Project, 2017 stages, and directing the engineer to file an assessment schedule with the city.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Just for my own clarification, the people who are giving a voluntary assessment, that was because they were improving their connections to the main, not just because they want to give us more money?
That's true.
Voluntary is a figure of speech. Thank you.
It was actually a really good deal for them to do it at this time, so.
This is similar to what we did on the west side with the businesses and all property owners on, as we went through and put the new water mains in.
Right.
To allow them to voluntarily assess stuff, improve their connections.
Right. And this is, this is actually a preliminary schedule, but we do have the final numbers, and that will be coming back before you on March 5th. That's a lot bigger document, more detailed document.
Very good. Further questions? Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Resolution 1827, zero.
Is the mayor voting?
It's not. It's going to be a long meeting. And I'm running out of resolution numbers. That's the problem here, so.
We'll make more.
Item number six, Resolution 1829, authorizing acquisition of real property for the Cedar River Parkway East project. Entertain a motion?
I will move Resolution 1829, authorizing acquisition of real property for the Cedar Valley Parkway East project. Acquisition for the following locations: Bruce T. Eckers and Kimberly K. Fulkers' property of parcel seven at 801 12th Street Southeast for $80,000; Timothy T. and Jody M. Griggs' property of parcel four and parcel 4A at 2540 East Bremer Avenue for $50,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Bill, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Just one left.
Okay, very good.
So we had a lengthy communication from Eckers and Fulkers about the project. Are they on board with what we're proposing here, would you say?
Yes. Yep. We've worked out all the details with them.
I assume you have all the property acquisitions in line, so we can start the tree-cutting. That'll all be taken care of in a timely manner.
We're closing most of them this week, so it should be done. We don't need the last one to do the trees, so.
And just to repeat a question that a citizen has asked me, that I've already asked Bill, but maybe do it here as well, and that is that in these land acquisition prices, everything is included in terms of any additional costs that might be related to, or are those separate? I mean, just to be transparent about how much it really, is it just the land? Or are there more costs? Yes.
There's no extra things for these two.
There wasn't any kind of fence or?
Actually, for Griggs, what we're doing is we're ending up with a leftover parcel on the south side of the parkway that was taken from GMT because of the curb, this little triangle. And we don't want to own it and maintain it, so we're going to actually convey it to Griggs with this property. But it's virtually not much worth, and it's only worth something to him on that side, so.
And I think Brian or somebody said, I think with the Fulkers, Eckert property, weren't there, wasn't there a fence or something involved in that as well?
No, that's, they're doing all their own fencing for the, for the price we agreed upon.
And there was no driveway?
There's no driveway. It's been removed. There's a, they have the ability to put a driveway in, in a certain location that we're agreeing to across from the other property owner to the south.
Thank you.
That would be at their cost.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Chair?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolution 1830, resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $11,050,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for the publication of notice- for essential corporate purposes and providing for the publication of notice thereof. Entertained a motion, please.
I'll move Resolution 1830, Resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $11,500,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof for March 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I assume this is primarily for the Cedar Valley, or Cedar Parkway Bridge?
This is for the Cedar Parkway project, for the 20th Street Phase 1A, I guess we're calling it with the railroad, and then also the South Riverside Park, first phase, the 218,000 there. That is all being able to be combined into one bond itself. When we get the information, Jennifer will have separate schedules of amortization for each project, but together, we'll sell them as once for a better pricing.
Knowing that the bids came in a million dollars under, are we looking at 10,000,000? 50,000? Since this is a not to exceed, are we still going to...
We put this out after we knew the bids. Because you have 9 million for the Parkway, 1.6 million for the 20th Street, so it takes us to 10, 6, and then the other 218,000 for the parks, which takes us to 10, 8, 18. And then we have the fees, and then the not to exceed, just in case, they round up a little bit, just to make sure, in case something would happen, that we do have that ability if we had to. And we have capacity to accomplish this, so we're comfortable with that number.
Have we had any indication from, needing folks, on where they think it may come in, given the environment currently with...
The hard part is, we won't be able to sell them and receive until July 1, because of the fiscal year that we have to cross in order to make the capacity work. So, we'll be through another possible rate increase, et cetera, but the market is still really favorable. This is a nice size bond. It won't be bank-qualified because it's too big for that course to go, so you will get a lot of underwriters in, east coast, a lot of bigger banks. You'll get Benardi out of Chicago, you'll get probably Bankers Bank, Automattic, you'll get a lot of those bigger players, insurance companies, et cetera, that'll be bidding versus a smaller bond. You get a lot of local banks interacting with some of the regional ones, so. Sold bonds much bigger, and it's usually really good rates, really attractive bonds, just because of what they are and our strength of our rating. I expect really good interest on this.
And where will this put us in terms of the percentage of our self-imposed cap?
Will be in the upper 70s, but not at 80. We'll still have a little room yet there, and then the other 20, if you absolutely had to, you could certainly do it. But we will not hit our 80%.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Wollstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolution 1831, Resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $1,700,000 water revenue bonds for the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, and providing for the publication of notice thereof. Entertained a motion?
I'll move Resolution 18 dash 31, Resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $1,700,000 water revenue bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, and providing for publication of notice thereof for March 5, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall.
Second.
Mike, could you, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Any input, James, on this one?
Just briefly, sir, this is, of course, the first payment that we expect to receive from DOT in the next spring. So, we're acquiring the funds now, again, similar marketplace, and we do this. We have at 1.7, we hope it's a little less, but again, not knowing what that final bill will be in our final third of that payment, we've allowed for a little cushion, just in case. We will obviously only utilize what we need and then reimburse back to the bond anything extra from that, so it's as close as we can get, knowing what we know now, before the project's completed, but on our estimates, I think it's a pretty good number.
Yes, that's a question a few people have asked me. Given the difficulty or the time-consumingness of doing the downtown portion of this, I'm assuming there's other change orders and unexpected, is that automatically being charged to us, or how does that get worked out?
It really kind of depends on what the change order is. As we're responsible for certain parts of the project, the DOT is responsible for other parts of the project. So, if it was a change order that affected something we were doing, say, in the parking lanes or the water main, that would be ours. If it was something in the street bed that they were doing, that's the DOT's. And so, while they look at the entire project encompassing, we only pay out our portion that's in the areas we are responsible for, and I believe it's parking lanes, sidewalks, water main, and this is only water main related in general. The other would be in the next two payments, it would be non-water main. And this is not accounted against our capacity, since it's paid for with water fees and not property taxes, and so that's how we're able to do both this and the other sizable bond together.
Questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wollstein.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item number nine, Set public hearing date to review the budget fiscal year 2018-19. Entertained a motion?
I'll move to set the public hearing date to review the budget fiscal year 2018-19 for March 5, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
This levy rate is based on all the discussion we've had, the changes we made?
Yes, sir. We're 14.44 and change, so as close as we get to 14.45 as we had estimated. Had a really good job of getting us right there and making the changes, and it was substantial, but again, that's where we ended up, pretty much where we thought we were going to, so that's what we're heading into the hearing with.
I'd like to thank the city staff for all the work they did putting it together.
It was a huge project. We spent a lot of time on that, and I think we've pared it down about as far as we can go. Motion made and seconded. Council discussion, voice vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing is set on the budget for March 5. Item number 10, Set public hearing to review the 2018 Bituminous Seal Coat Program project plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Entertained a motion?
I'll move that we set the public hearing for March 19, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to review the 2018 Bituminous Seal Coat Program project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
So, looking at the map of how the project is laid out, I see there's a little X denoting where the material storage is. I assume that's in the parking lot, I would say, where the county fair, the big park is. Is that correct? Where's the material storage?
Yeah, that's correct. That's at the south end of the parking lot by the tractor pole.
Okay. Is there any possibility that this is going to interact badly with the county fair?
No, this should be done prior to the county fair.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 11, Set public hearing to review the 2018 Slurry Seal Program project plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost.
I will move to set the public hearing for March 19, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to review 2018 Slurry Seal Program project plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost.
I'll second that.
Very good. Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion?
I've got the same sort of question. I'm saying, the staging area is that parking lot that belongs to Warburg College, has there been discussion with Warburg College to make sure that's available?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have one question, too. What is the difference between a seal coat program, Bituminous Seal Coat Program and a slurry seal coat program? Obviously, you're using different materials. Okay, what we've traditionally done is Bituminous Seal Coating, where you spray hot oil and then sprinkle the chips on top. With that process, there is a fair amount of waste. There's probably in the neighborhood 20, 25% waste of the chips. With the slurry seal, instead of using a cut-back asphalt, you use emulsified asphalt, so it's got, the dispersing agent is water. And you mix the aggregate with the oil and then use it as a special distributor to then spread the material on the pavement. So, there is no waste with this process. The downside is with, you have to wait for the water to evaporate from the oil mixture, okay? So, it does take, you want to do this on a hot, dry day. You don't want to do it on a cool, humid day. It wants to be a hot, dry day, because it will take, you know, six hours for it to cure before you can get vehicles back up on it. That's one of the downsides. So, in the location that we're doing this, there will be staging and coordination work, and so we want to have enough of a project that they can actually kind of bounce back and forth between the Jade Stone subdivision and 12th Street and do pieces of each while it's carrying out. Would you be doing both sides of the street at the same time, or just one? No. Certainly with 12th Street, we're not, we're only going to do one lane at a time. We're probably looking at closing it to all but local traffic. If you meet another neighbor on the road coming at you, you have the shoulder that you can work with and pass. So, Jade Stone is probably going to be more like west half, east half of the subdivision that's done, so we'll work with notifying the neighbors and staging the work. Thank you. This is, you know, we're looking at the Jade Stone as a little bit of a demonstration project. This may be the only year we do it. We'll have to see how it, well, it works within a residential area. We did this on 39th Street Southeast last year. Worked very well. This, again, we like it to be hot and dry when it's done. It would not work well in a heavily shaded area with lots of, say, trees lining the boulevard. You want to get sunlight, you want to get heat down onto the pavement.
So, demonstration area for the slurry product?
For the slurry, yep. There are other, certainly other locations within the community that we'd look at utilizing it, but it's not a process that we would use everywhere within the community. We'd be very selective.
Is it more expensive?
The initial cost is, but there are certainly some added benefits to it, that you do not have the aggregate waste. The loose gravel up on top of a seal-coated street is something that we hear quite a bit about from the adjacent property owners, and that first year, a lot of it gets bladed into their yard during the snow removal operations. So, this is something that we look at utilizing on the full-depth asphalt streets that we've rebuilt. This is a maintenance practice that we're going to consider and evaluate going forward. But again, it is not a product that we'd look at for every situation, again, because if you have a heavily tree-lined road, I think of like 4th Street Northwest, from Walgreens past Little Junior High, that would probably not be a good street, nor would 5th Avenue Northwest. So, but we think Jade Stone is an excellent candidate.
So, does the two different methods, excuse me, vary on how much crowning they produce?
Well, the seal coating, the Bituminous Seal Coating, is easier to place on a heavily crowned road. A slurry seal would be more challenging to place on a heavily crowned road. The slurry seal does provide a little bit of leveling benefit, so if there are some dips or depressions, this process will help smooth some of that out. The chips, the Bituminous Seal Coating chips do not, but the slurry seal will.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of setting a public hearing for the slurry seal program, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reports from boards, excuse me, reports from boards and commissions, Historic Preservation Commission minutes. Any comments from anyone? Received into record. Monthly financials. There are no comments. They are received. Planning zoning commission minutes, January Minutes received into record. Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes, January 8, 2018. Received. Senior calendar, February of 2018. They are received into record. Staff comments, please.
I think we have just a few, sir.
Good evening. At your places tonight, you have a flyer that says, "The Food Fight." This is an initiative between the library and the civic center to see who can collect the most food the next four weeks. Started today, it'll end on March 19, and hopefully, you will bring your stuff here the next time.
[Laughter]
Or not at the library. We were on, Sarah and I were on the radio this morning, and they kind of forced us to have a final activity for the loser, and of course, Sarah didn't want to go for the shaving the heads, but we are going to be hit with a pie whoever loses, so we're all looking forward to that. Anyway, the idea is, 19% of the county is hunger insecure, and we want to try to encourage people to use our receptacles in the lobbies of each one of our buildings. The receptacles were, was a Iowa Arts Council grant from two years ago, that local artists painted the globes, the middle school students designed the receptacles, and the industrial technology students at the high school built them. So, it was a community-wide project, and we're going to use them for the next month.
Excuse me, what percentage of the county is food?
19%.
19, thank you. I was afraid you said 90.
This is going to be determined by weight?
Correct.
How big are containers can you handle?
They will be delivered to the Waverly food pantry at least on a weekly basis, so, and we have large containers inside of the receptacles.
But if someone wants to bring a can, how big can you accept?
I would suggest, think of the users of the product, and, for instance, James is going to bring a 20-pound bag of rice, and I told him that 21-pound bags of rice would be better.
We were, you know, looking at bringing 50-pound bags of rice to the library, just to kind of help them out a little bit, because we're all very anxious to see Ted take one in the face.
It's a mashed potato pie, so.
Maybe we'll have a tie, we could do both.
Wouldn't that be something? I like that, Bill.
[Inaudible]
Of course.
Sure.
It depends.
You should set a public hearing date.
See, I'm disappointed that the drive ends on March nineteenth because I think March fourteenth, which is Pie Day, would be perfect for this.
Pi Day.
At any rate, it's going to be a worthwhile addition.
We will have updates on poundages each week. And we've got a series of news releases so that people are reminded constantly. So watch the newspaper and other forms of media.
I think that's all we have, sir. Thank God.
Again, I would encourage. No. Other staff comments? City council comments? Turning down to Mike, or you?
Just wanted you to know that, well, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I was driving across Louisiana and I heard on the radio that it was a nice sunny day and I heard that Iowa was having a blizzard and I was really feeling homesick just then.
Dan?
No.
Dan?
Edie and I will be serving as celebrity chefs at the Bremer County Four-H omelet cook-off on March fourth. So it's a worthy cause. So if anyone wants to come eat the food we prepare, we invite everybody.
Very good. Edie?
I'm looking forward to that.
Jim?
Just hoping that Beth is talking with Chamber and hopefully some sad news this weekend about losing the Palace, barely shutting down. And hopefully, you know, trying to find some encouragement and see if we can find some investors that maybe want to get in and keep that as a family entertainment venue within the city. I think it's a nice draw to our city, so.
Rod?
Not tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Brian?
I was just going to echo Tim's comments. Sad to hear the Waverly Palace closing, but I would encourage everyone to frequent the existing downtown businesses. I think there's lots of great storefronts along there that could use a little bit more foot traffic. So I'm not forcing you, saying you got to buy something, but at least you should go in and take advantage of the shopping that's available.
Thank you. I heard about Palace this morning, just a casual comment, at about six-thirty at breakfast. And thought that's all it was till a little later. I get various messages that it had happened. Couple things, two or three things I'd like to do is give the city crew a shout-out for snow removal. The last snow we had, everyone was commenting about how great it was and the streets were in good shape and everything. Also, last Monday or Tuesday a week ago, I attended a public safety board meeting and received some nice information, but also they had scheduled a tour of the jail. And that's the first time I had been in that facility.
I believe you.
Not even under those conditions that I've been in there, other than the lobby to visit with the things. So those of you, particularly new council people, if you have not had that opportunity, I would encourage you to.
I've actually been in the jail already.
Been there.
Because I was on the Citizens Police Academy.
Okay. But it's a worthwhile tour and there are some interesting stories that came out of there about why this is the way it is. And, no, I think Sheriff Pickens would be receptive to anyone that, even the public, would want to take a tour of that facility. I did attend a meeting in Des Moines this morning with Representative Sandy Solomon from Janesville. She's our closest legislative representative. And also Debbie Durham, Economic Development Director for the state. And Bill and Connie participated by phone, but it was a, I think it was a productive meeting. They got some questions answered concerning some of our businesses here in town and what some of their situations might be. And encouraged to, when things came in, don't forget Waverly because we're here. And things, other than that, I don't have anything. I would, Sharon is here and we haven't run her out yet. Apologize for the lengthy meetings. One more to go. And hopefully, things will not be quite so crying, but I think it's been a good discussion with everything, particularly the Casey's project. And we'll go from there. Entertained a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for adjournment. Thank you. Thank you.